Clark?
Here.
David?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Jorgensen?
Here.
Cole?
Here.
Parliament?
Here.
Mayor Heinem?
If there's any questions or corrections.
Yeah, I did see on page nine where it's talking about the mayor. He does not vote on, on spending. So it would be at the top of page nine, I think, under Aspen Park, parking improvements. Other than that, I would make a motion to approve as corrected.
Second.
Okay. Good catch. Little motion and a second to approve with the amendment. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You have the claims in front of you. I know we looked at these the other night. I don't know if there were any questions then.
Vote to approve. Second.
A motion and a second to approve the claims.
I did have one question on the software. Christina from Sioux Falls. Is that for? Where did I see it?
I believe that is the Zerker software for the PD.
Okay.
Police Department.
Any other questions on the claims? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. If consent calendar plat of lot 10, block 6, Tallgrass addition, plat of lot 1, block 1, of Aspen Harbor addition, and plat of lots 13, 14, 15, in block 4, and lot 2 in block 5, of Twin Rivers Crossing addition, and then plat of lots 9A, 9B, and block 12 of Sunrise Estate addition.
No problem.
A motion and a second to approve those. Any questions or further comment? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. It's at this time that we have comment available time. We do have some items under public hearing, and those that would like to comment on those, we do ask that you keep your comments to under five minutes or at the most five minutes. I think we have a number of agenda items tonight. Probably, I've only been in this position a few months, but this is the longest agenda I've seen in my time. And Brian said he doesn't serve pizza at halftime, so go ahead. So, the microphone is here. Anyone state your name, address, and the issue in which you'd like to speak to. Okay, move on to the public hearing. First item is the 2022 alcoholic beverage licenses. Brian, anything there that I should review?
Just one. We did have a violation this past year at Tailgaters. It was an after-hours violation. Other than that, we haven't received any comments on the list.
Dave here.
We're here to represent Tailgaters.
Okay, come on.
Yeah, you can stay. You have to turn that on. There's that button on there.
There's a little button on the front.
Is it working?
Yep.
We're good.
Just kind of explain the situation, if you would, please.
We had a violation for after-hours, people being in the building. So, we wrote up, wrote up under 249-205, where it states, "Nobody can be in the building or premises after 2:30 a.m.," I believe. With us being open till 2:00 a.m., we had, that was a weekend of the outlaw races. There were people in the building till 2:00. Everybody was removed before 2:00. We had two employees that were there cleaning till after that time. Noah, one of my managers, was there cleaning. It was 3:00 when one of the officers entered the building, noticed that he had not, you know, removed himself from the, from the premises by 2:30. When we are open till 2:00 in the morning, there is no way that, and there's people in there, there was about 100 people in there till 2:00. There is no justifiable way to get a restaurant cleaned, back open, back to the way that it needs to be in the morning for opening in a half hour. I know this notion, or this violation was wrote back in 1991, when bars were only open till 1:00 a.m. That gave them a sufficient hour and a half time to clean the bar, get it back to, you know, the time that it needed to be, or be able to clean it, get it back to the manner that it needs to be to open, reopen in the morning. So it's something to maybe take a look at, that a half hour is not a substantial amount of time to get a bar cleaned and get everybody removed from the premises.
So it's not like you're sitting in there drinking, having a party?
Nope, nope. There were a few employees that were off, that were drinking that night, that were waiting for a ride, but they are, they were employees of Tailgaters, still are employees of Tailgaters. They did not have any alcoholic beverages. There were no violations to that. So it was just on-premise after the 2:30 rule.
I have a question.
I was gonna.
Okay, you go.
Time in.
You go.
So I, I've been, I was in police work since 1978, and the half-hour rule has been the half-hour rule during that entire time. I'm not sure what you're talking about as far as 1991.
Okay.
But the 2:00 closing time, as far as I know, in Sioux Falls was always the 2:00, and had people leaving the premises. Chief, is that accurate, that there was no alcohol out on the?
That is correct. It was just hours operation, employees, and there wasn't anybody drinking.
Okay.
There wasn't anything being served. It was merely the ordinance that relates to after-hours, being open at 2:00, right? People were trying to stop for hours.
Okay, thank you.
So, maybe Dave can answer that. So that is a state law, that's not like a city thing?
It's, um... As far as I know, I never cited anybody for it, but as far as I know, it was one of, part of the state regulations. And I could be wrong, I'd have to look at the ordinance, but.
We have, we'll look.
Well, it sounds like to me a good explanation, and first of all, I'm happy you had somebody there, 100 people there till 2:00.
That's true.
It's a beautiful thing.
You know, and I am one of, I'm the front-house manager there, and I was not even aware of this rule. I didn't know that there was a time, which is my bad, I was not trained on that, to be brought to my attention, that employees need to be out, or everybody had to be out of the building by 2:30. So that is partially on me 100%. The other thing is, I've been bartending there for 11 years. There has been, I bet you 100 times, that I was in the building after 2:30 a.m., cleaning up, getting stuff ready to go for the next day. So I'm not sure exactly why this time that it was brought to, you know, Noah unfortunately was there past 3:00, and we were brought up on this ordinance, so.
Could you just state your name and your title?
My name is Zach Bolter, front-house manager of Tailgaters.
Well, we appreciate you asking.
Yep.
Thank you. Anything else with that particular item? Is there anything we need to do on that?
Need to have a motion.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve the 2022 beverage licenses for those entities listed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number two is a liquor license transfer, retail wine and cider liquor from Joker's Casino to Dakota Star Casino, would appear just down the street. Is anyone to speak to that?
Just a transfer.
Okay, just a transfer.
Motion approved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, first reading of ordinance number 651, rezoning of lot 1, block 7, Tallgrass addition from R1 Low Density Residential to R3 High Density Residential. I know probably you have several that want to speak to this.
Ben Souls, 721 South Fourth. Me and my wife Nicole applied for this recent application with the plan to build 42 units of townhouses on here in nine separate buildings. We are under contract on this land. The sale is contingent on the rezone. We put the plan together, taking into account the 2035 comprehensive plan, as well as the 2020 housing study. With that info, as well as the location on an arterial street and being adjacent to industrial, and then with residential next to it, we thought this would be a good location for some townhomes. Prior to the application, or prior to the planning and zoning meeting, we held a neighborhood meeting, and it was well-attended by residents of Tallgrass Village, as well as the neighborhood to the east of us there. We agree with the residents of this, the main concern was they saw the rezone sign being R3, and we have no intention of doing an 80-unit building. We'd like to stick to the townhome design. It fits better in R3, just due to the number of parcels we would have to do, and then also the number of conditional use permits. So we'd like to do this R3 on one plat with a conditional use to do the 42 units, which we'll apply for after, if, if this is approved. We're also open to discussion on landscaping or fencing barrier to keep this separate from Tallgrass Village across the street and to the east. The current plan, I know, might, there's been some discussion on as far as entrance and exit off of Redwood. We would like to keep it that way, if we can, but, and then if this is approved, this would be a several-year project, as we'd probably build a couple buildings per year. That's kind of what we're here for. Are there any questions?
Yep. Can you explain to me why you would cite the housing study as a reason for townhomes?
That kind of lays out the need for both rentals and single-family homes, and I think we fit, fit the need for the rentals in Brandon. I don't remember the exact number it says is needed in the next five years.
So Ben, there's been some questions about why apply for R3 instead of R2. Could you just explain that concept to us?
The application for R3 is, is these will be leased, not sold, and a lot of that just comes down to ease of getting this rezoned and not replatted, and then rezoned or replatted, or zoned and then platted, as well as the conditional use. We would like to build five-unit buildings. Most of them will be five-unit buildings, and in R2, each lot with a five-unit building would require its own conditional use. That was a concern we talked about at the neighborhood meeting, and we're okay with the conditional use stating what we can and can't do. We also have a, this is a, the sale is contingent on the rezone, as, as well as the seller approving our plans, and the seller wants to see something similar to what we've proposed, not an apartment building.
And the other concern I've heard from residents is drainage, and I'm presuming all of those plans have to go through our city engineer before anything is agreed on?
In the past, I've used Sayre, and I think they've worked with the city on other stuff, and we'll, we will have that engineering done, yeah.
I recently had a resident ask me about overflow of parking, so it looks like these units would be anticipated to have a couple of garages underneath them, like two-car.
Yes.
So what about like overflow for guests and visitors? Where would you anticipate that to go?
The way it's laid out, yeah, is there are two stall garages on each unit. They're three-bed, two, two-bath, two-car garage units, and there'll be parking in front of the garage for two additional vehicles. And then on that plan also, there is 10. I don't have it in front of me. There are some additional parking on the corners of that driveway going through the parcel.
So, are these driveways right onto Redwood, or are they?
Our current plan does show them off of Redwood, and that, of course, after the rezone, would have to get approved in the, the final plan, but.
Questions? Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Comments? Others?
Good evening. My name is Michael Totes. I live at 500 East Mayberry. I'm just to the west of the proposed plat. Let's say, good evening, thank you for giving us the opportunity to voice our concerns over the proposed rezoning of lot 1, block 7, and Tallgrass addition. I know the planning and zoning voted to recommend the rezoned R3. I'd like to take a minute to go through some of our concerns, and some of the discussion planning and zoning had, in making their recommendation. We had several concerns, including, including, or, we have several concerns, including the effects that increasing the density would have on the surrounding neighborhoods, including traffic, and the increased use of the neighborhood park. When planning and zoning discussed the traffic, they said that we were also concerned with that same issue a couple of years ago, when they tried to rezone the lot just to the west of this lot. Currently, they don't have any traffic problems, and didn't think that there would be any with this project. The flaw with that argument is that our concerns at that time were that the rezone would be a higher density, which didn't happen, and that lot that's currently being built up is R1. So basically, they said that, said before, we had a concern, and it was built up in a manner that we agree with, and there's no problem, so we should do this different this time. So that's a very flawed argument on their part, I feel. Similarly, they discussed our concerns with the increased use of Tallgrass Park. They propose, the proposed plan has little green space for kiddos to play, and in general, multifamily housing requires more parks because there's less green space and no yards to play in. When going from R1 to R3, there would undoubtedly be an increased impact to the neighborhood park. The response was that they have a park just down the street. Again, my concern was that they'll have impact on our park, and the response was that there is a park. This did not address our concern. I'm not opposed to high density. I've been lots of cities with high density, that's great, but that's not where I chose to live. I chose to live in Brandon, in Tallgrass Village. Excuse me, a little nervous, but that's right. And I chose to buy a house next to a vacant lot that's zoned R1. I didn't see any reason for this to change. There has been no transition that would require this to change. The only thing that's changed in that area is that the lot directly to the west of it is being built up as R1. The most comparable lot in the entire world is next to it, and is being built up successfully as R1. No one has discussed any reason that this needs to change, only that they want it to change, and that's not enough reason to go from R1 to R3. I ask you to consider our concerns, that this increased density will have on the surrounding neighborhoods, and keep this R1. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shawna Shipper. I'm the original and current owner at 601 Tamarack. I live there with my husband, my daughter, my two rescue bone retrievers, and sometimes foster kids. Between us, we work seven jobs. As well as following my high school around with her soccer cheer orchestra, Salsa Hosa FCA, we volunteer for some of those things, plus our church, Massa Humane Society. My, of course, our players, good to you. In the last few days, I've been contacting my own engineers, architects, lawyers, and insurance professionals, and other specialists. They have all advised me that this is not a good situation for homeowners in the neighborhood. I'm a little feeling deceived by some of this here. One example, according to the 2020 Engineers Report, $300,000 was spent on Redwood's storm sewer improvements. I can tell you, the streets still flood when it rains. This issue grew exponentially with the addition of buildings, reduction of green space, and lack of planning over the last two decades in the industrial area. Losing 75% of green space and expecting the runoff to exit where it floods onto streets does not seem like a long-term solution. In the plan, I see no rain garden, no retainer pond, no fence, no berms. Might I suggest leaving the property as green space and continue to replenish the much-needed water to the aquifer rather than robbing it? It was announced that Harrisburg, Sioux Falls, and by default, Brandon are running short of water. If we're running short of water, why are we building apartments for 42 families? Water rates, water rate increases have been confirmed. I've never had a sump pump in my house, but I fear that I will have water issues in the future. Not only would that add expense for us, now our multiple employers are disrupted, further compounding stress for businesses, individuals, and slowing production while we spend time to clean up. And speaking with my insurance reps, they are very cautious about overflow of water and advise flood insurance. That's unfair to expect homeowners to now have to carry that liability. Another issue that needs to be reviewed is traffic. It's not unheard of to have traffic backed up a block or so when buses stop to pick up kids east of 9th Avenue. Consider Blokowski has dozens of trucks with two trailers trying to get onto the street within feet of the proposed entrances to the apartments. That would be challenging to them at best, as well as the tenants, other businesses, and drivers. The bus barn's a block away. There are hundreds of buses coming and going each day. To compound the issue, we estimate that there's going to be two buses clogging up traffic there twice a day. And also, the I-90 traffic will have to be diverted when they're redoing that bridge. I feel like this whole situation is about greed. The church not treating the neighbors as ourselves and dispersing their burdens on the neighborhood. The purchasers for putting apartments profits with disregard for neighborhood safety, traffic, and water issues, and privacy, and other problems. And homeowners, us homeowners, for not wanting to take on those troubles. We are people, we're families, we're taxpayers, we're your constituents. Why would you approve this? I've not gotten an answer. You were elected to represent us, to speak in our best interest. That's what we expect.
Thank you.
My name is Bailey Mosley Shipper. I live on 601 Tamarack Avenue. I'm here today because I am against having apartments in the lot behind my house. One reason is, one day this fall, I was on my way to school in the morning, and it was lightly raining. I was driving my car on Redwood near Split Rock Boulevard, like I do every day, and it was down to practically one lane instead of three, due to flooding in the streets. It was scary because I was not exactly sure on the depth, and I didn't want to hurt my car by driving through the water. Luckily, there was not that much traffic at that time in the morning, or raining any harder. Another reason is, I am uncomfortable with the knowledge of several strangers being in a two-story apartment so close to me. Our house is only one story, and all we have to protect us is a four-foot fence. Also, if I'm running late for school, activities, or work at Taco John's one day, which happens every once in a while with a packed schedule, I want to be confident that I can still make it to the destination in a reasonable time, and won't worry, have to worry about being tardy for school or other activities.
Is this on, or do I need to push it? Okay. Hi, I'm Megan Brown. I live at 300 East Meadowlark Court, which is on the corner of Pask Flower and Meadowlark, and my concern with this project really is the high density. It comes to, thank you Dana, it was my email that I think you were referencing with the traffic. I have two sons, and my house on the gathering nights can look like a used car lot, and I'm sure my neighbors are very patient with me. And so, again, when you put in 42 units with families, or even multiple non-related members living there, and they host gatherings, there will be a lot of traffic. And I already know Pask Flower, especially around the corner on the way to the elementary school, is extremely busy. I see the kids walking that way constantly down to BE, and when we allow parking on both sides of the street, it becomes even more difficult, especially with those kids on their bikes and things. So, that's my concern, is just putting 42 additional high-density unit in that neighborhood, and the traffic flow and the parking are my overall concerns. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike Trailer. I live at 613 North Tamarack. This is a property immediately behind my house. I'm in the northeast corner of this lot, basically. And my biggest complaint about this also is the density. I moved here knowing that this is an R1, and you're trying to go, or, and it's trying to get rezoned to R3 with no buffer whatsoever. Isn't it typical that you put an R2 between R1 and R3? It was told me, I was told that by planning and zoning years ago, when we came here for the property to the west where Thunder Creek is. Now they're going against that. They didn't even consider this. They went immediately to approve. It, it felt like a back, you know, behind closed-door deal was done before we even came there. We were completely disregarded. My other complaint is the traffic, as everyone else has mentioned. No one has mentioned, I believe, we were also told that Pask Flower is not your standard width of a road. How are you going to fit cars parked on either side of it, because there is not enough parking within this property? You're going to get one car through there at most. How are you going to handle that overflow parking with 42 units? You're looking at, most houses, most families have two cars. If you got a teenager or two, you're going to have, you know, an additional car. So, potentially three for some of those units? 100 cars in this one area. Can that traffic, or can we support that kind of traffic in that small area? Another, I mean, it's my backyard. I don't want apartments, or, you know, the townhomes that are all connected as a big wall of building behind me. Would you want that in your backyard? I highly doubt it. I just, I have no problem with them building nice houses. His approval, those buildings look nice, but that's just it. It's a proposal. That doesn't mean that's what he's going to do in the end. Or if this doesn't go through, the next person, this has been approved for R3. Even if he doesn't get it, somebody else might come through and do something else, and not as nice. There is a serious shortage of single-family homes or light residential. Why do we have to go directly to this dense? Okay, it's the church that's putting this out there for the, the higher residential. They're intentionally courting multifamily dwelling units, not single-family homes, by the price, and they're listing with the, the real estate agent. I, I just, I don't know what else to say. Just, please use some common sense on this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Hi. My name is Riley Walls. I live at 609 Tamarack Avenue, right next to Mike, so directly to the east of this property. My main concern is similar to everybody's. It's the high density. It's the high density. I just recently moved into this home about a year ago, and whenever we were asking about the property, directly behind us, they said it would potentially just become an R2 or some sort of, just more housing. My wife and I were trying to have kids, and I was really drawn to Brandon just for the idea of this town of having a nice tight-knit community. And for me, developing relationships with my neighbors around me, and, you know, continuing to maintain and like grow these relationships as like I go on further in life and my children also grow up and have people to play with, it's nice to have longer-term, you know, somebody go along with you on that journey, instead of, you know, just short temporary people coming in and out. Trust me, I've been in, like, in and out of, like, townhomes before, you know, it's not necessarily like where I want to stay. So just maintaining that dream of, you know, having a nice tight-knit community that is there for the long term. Another concern that I have is that specifically with this design, my house is already kind of sloping downward just for it being one of the older houses built on the block. So with this, the drainage would go directly into my backyard. And also, I mean, quality of light, if these are two-story buildings, the lighting is gonna, there's gonna be just massive shadow in my yard. And also, people will be able to look down into my home. I can't really build a fence high enough to, you know, block that from happening. Those are just my main concerns. I hope you consider this.
Don DeJager, I'm at 504 Mayberry. I'm directly on the west side of this development. Some of these points have been touched on already, but I typed this, so I'm just gonna read it. "When this proposed development is compared to the townhome developments in the bluffs west of Brandon or Sunrise Creek east of Brandon, and I did take the time to go out and compare this to both of those, and it's easily apparent that this is simply too dense. The east side of this proposal calls for a five-plex and a four-plex side by side with a 25-foot setback. This creates a two-story wall for all the homeowners on the east side. It's easy to see why they are upset. At one time or another, before becoming a homeowner, I have lived in apartments, I have rented houses, I have lived in townhome. That is not my bias. This proposed development is simply too dense. This proposal has two exits onto Redwood Boulevard, one of which will lie about 100 feet east of Paskflower's exit. The proposal states there should be little to no impact to traffic on Paskflower. I disagree. Having two exits that close together will certainly cause traffic issues. Chapter four and chapter eight of Brandon's 2035 Comprehensive Plan has many areas of topic concerning Redwood Boulevard. From infrastructure assessment to growth constraints, all discussing transportation issues on Redwood Boulevard and limiting additional access points. Now zoning approves the change from R1 to R3. I see no logic in that. When I addressed my concerns at zoning and planning, public hearing, about increased traffic on Redwood and how it would affect Paskflower's exit, a commissioner stated, 'I drove by that intersection, I didn't see any traffic issues.' And another statement of, 'A hundred cars leave that church with no issues.' Is that a definition of impact study? Sunday services at Celebration Church tend to average less than 50 cars. Sunday's mornings count was 27. Did you forget I live right there? I would be curious to know when they counted 100 cars leaving. I honestly believe 50 cars exiting on a quiet Sunday morning is gonna be a lot different than 84 cars on a busy Monday morning trying to go to work, safely assuming two cars per family. Regarding the commissioner's comment about no traffic issues, that's mainly due in part to east Paskflower parcel staying R1. The proposed rezon request for that parcel was denied in 2016 and 2017. With the addition of Thunder Creek Homes and its projected 18 houses, traffic is gonna increase there. Maybe I am wrong, maybe impact studies concerning traffic were done, maybe a lot of thought did go into zoning and planning's decision to approve this, but when the answers to my questions consist of intersection drive-bys and inflated church estimates, I become concerned. My contention is simply this: 42 units is too dense for this location, and I ask you to vote no on this proposal.
Hi, I'm Alyssa Tealy. I live at 200 Maureen Drive. I'm on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I, was it a unanimous vote to recommend a due pass to the city council? It was. I know I voted for it because during our discussion, it appeared clear that it was an appropriate use for this piece of land. Something occurred to me, and that is this. This occurred to me because many years ago, somebody wanted to start a paintball park where you shoot each other with paintballs at the corner of Sue and Holly, on that, where that farm is. And so they came to city council wanting to know if they could do that. Well, turns out, once the lady who owned the land found out that that's what they wanted to do with it, she refused to sell it to them. And I wondered if any of the neighbors had talked to the church, to the seller, to see how the seller feels about this kind of property right next to their property, you know, if they wanted to sell it to, if they, if they're comfortable with this, if the seller is comfortable with this. Anyway, I just, that occurred to me, and I thought, I want to make sure that, that thought is on the record, so I came here tonight to say it. Thanks.
Hello, my name is David Knudsen. I live about a half mile away on North 9th Avenue. I can't directly speak on the density as I don't live right next to it. However, growing up in Brandon, really enjoying everything it has to offer, and then being able to buy a townhome on North 9th Avenue, has been really good for me, having a place to call my own, a place to live. And in that area, it's 85% or more rentals. Most of the townhomes there, quadplexes are rentals, there's about 26-unit apartments for sale. So I do live on a street that is more high-density than normal areas of Brandon. However, the problem, you know, there's not really much of a problem with traffic there. Most people that are speeding up, people that are driving through, and not the people that live there. What I do know, right now, the market's been a little bit crazy with Brandon, and more people are trying to come in and enjoy the town that we do have. There's just not enough places to live, and we do need to set up a community where people can move here, live here, and have that move-up, move-down availability. And I think that would help great, greatly. As of today, there's only 15 homes available for sale, and in the last couple of days, most of them entered under $300,000. So having affordable living in Brandon is difficult when majority of the homes available, majority of the places to live are expensive, out of reach for someone that wants to be here, wants to start a family and be a part of the school district. So, as for the density, I can't speak on that, but as for the best and highest use, I do think that we do need more multifamily, more options for people to be a part of Brandon, to be in the community, whether, not just strictly on whether they have really good jobs that they can afford $500,000 homes or not.
Any other comments on this particular issue?
So do I keep pushing the button? So I'm on? Okay. My name's Ryan Martin, 601 Tamarack. My wife and daughter were up here speaking. You know, the high density is my biggest issue, along with potential crime. My wife specifically talked to Mr. David Colher, addressed concerns, and he was nice enough to sit down. Thank you for, for that. He says, well, it's gonna be a crime-free zone, they're gonna have signs up. Okay, that doesn't stop crime, though. And the neighbor to the north of us, she sold her house a month or two ago, probably two months ago by now. It was on the market for one hour. She sold it. Four houses to the south of us, I believe. That house is, they had an open house this weekend. So I don't know if it's related to what's going on behind where the, you know, we're going from R1 to R3. And I would just like to see some common sense here. The builder here, he came up, gave a decent presentation, but the thing is, the Planning and Zoning Commission just passed it through. Didn't even, you know, they're like, oh, there's not gonna be a traffic issue, there's not gonna be a flooding issue. Well, in his fancy little brochure, he was listing two-bedroom, two-bath. He was just up here saying three-bedroom, two-bath. So there's already deception going on. And I've never spoken in front of the city council, so thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Yvonne Oliver. I live on the east Heatherwood. I'd been here to the council once before when you guys were looking into actually bringing in that home for the disabled, and I thought that would've been a bad idea. And once again, I knew that it was gonna eventually creep over to the next thing, then the next thing, and sooner or later, all of the different zonings that you have will end up just being forgotten and incrementally changed. I came from Virginia when I was younger, and the families there, being my father was the pastor in the area, everyone was there watching out for each other. We couldn't do anything down the road or anywhere without someone saying, don't do that, you know? And it was close-knit. I loved that. But then, once I was a teenager, I moved to California. Shock. I couldn't even say good evening, good morning, good afternoon, yes sir, no sir, with people looking at me like, what's wrong with you? You know? They didn't see, they wasn't used to that, because they were so far removed from small towns, communities, people watching out for each other. So we look at now, we at a point now where we're not even looking at what we have right now. We just looking at, oh, this progress, we need to just let other people be able to experience this. God has a plan for all of us, and whatever time he has that plan for us, believe me, doors are gonna open up for you. All we, all people here are seeing is that God has opened a door for them, brought them somewhere they can have, that they can be with their families. And everybody's close-knit, everybody, because when I came here, my neighbors were so wonderful and loving towards me. I just moved here in May, but I felt like I was back home in Virginia once again, where people cared about one another. Didn't matter who you were, it's just the fact that they said, you in here with us, you here, you paying your taxes, you here, you taking care, you know, you want to be a part of this community, and that's why I came here. It's because I found out that it's a safe community. It was somewhere where you can bring your family and feel like you're safe, and knowing that it's not high-density where I came from, because believe me, you don't want that. Because you do lose that hometown feel. You do lose that part where people are really close to one another and really looking out for one another. Because I knew if I was left out of my house where I was, where we were in Virginia, people had our back. Oh, we seen this, we seen that, oh, you know? But here, when I was out to California, it was nothing like that. You didn't hardly know your neighbor. You didn't even, if you knew any of them, you know? Because everybody bypassed, and everybody's on their own busy schedule. But here, people took our time to talk to me, to get to know who I was, and I love that. And I can understand why they feel in the way they feel, because a contract was made. You told me it was gonna be like this when I moved here. You said this is gonna be the law, this is gonna be the zoning for this. And now you saying, oh no, you know, here's progress, we need a change. Now you broke that contract with them. Something they felt like, hey, I want to be a part of this. They helped this place grow. They put their hard-earned money in this area, because they wanted to keep it like it is. Or if it is open to someone, there's someone who's coming in and buying in just like they have, just like I have. And I think you need to consider all of that. That sometimes, yeah, it's good to change, sometimes, yeah, it is good to grow, but how we do it, that's how we should look at it, how we do the growth. We gotta pay attention to these things, because some things sounds great and good on paper, but believe me, when you live it and you see it for what it really is, it's not all that great. Because once you have here, it's something good, and you should try, your daughters keep it that way. And I thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I make a quick request. I jumped on the city's website and pulled up our zoning map. I think it'd be really helpful if we could see the zoning map in the area that we're talking about as we discuss it.
That's right.
As we're pulling that up, Tim, I have a question. You're on P&amp;Z, yeah, you're our, you're our liaison, right, for the P&amp;Z. What was the, I don't know if it's justification, or the thought process from changing from
I mean, I, I don't know if there's one specific reasoning why. It seemed as though the P&amp;Z commission, especially with the proposal of the four-plexes and five-plexes, seemed to think that this was a decent proposal for that piece of land. Maybe Alyssa can remember, is she still here? Or did she leave? Oh, well. So I, I can't remember specifically why. I know they voted unanimously to approve it, and I can't, my memory is starting to fail me, so I can't remember why when the last piece that came before us was rezoned, why it was not rezoned. I sat through two of them on that property, and I can't remember the specifics as to why. But it does appear that they voted unanimously to change it, I think because of the plan that's in front of them. They were also, you know, when they rezoned it to R3, I believe you can build 35 units without a conditional use. When they do come before the P&amp;Z for conditional use, when they do put conditions on the property, they will look at how the buildings are drawn, how they're laid out, how the landscaping is done. At that time, they will put conditions on the property, and if they're not met, it won't be built. So, I believe, that being said, they also probably were a little more apt to go with it, because they knew they still had another step that they could control the outcome of it.
Can I make a quick comment? Mr. Hidbreak was visibly agitated that we were even up here discussing all this that night. I got a question, what was going through his head of why? That was all, that was all.
So I can't talk about Brian's mind, I, who knows, right? I suppose you could call him and ask him.
So can we zoom in on that area a bit better and just like point out where we're specifically looking at? There you go. So where our cursor is, is where we're talking about turning orange. So make sure we're all on the same page.
You need those laser pointers like we talked about the other night.
Empty lot.
Empty lot.
The cursor's on.
So I'm gonna actually make a motion to deny the rezoning, and hopefully somebody will second, so we can have discussion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to deny the rezone of this particular area. Further discussion.
I'll start. Um, so I've thought a lot about this. I do 100% agree that we need to find some more affordable housing for Brandon. And I think it really boils down to, is this spot the right place to do that? And I looked a lot at this map, and what we're looking at for the high-density R3 is what is orange now, which is right over by the highway, by Split Rock. It's behind some businesses. But if you look at the section of town that we're looking at, changing this to the east, to the west, to the south, these are all single-family homes. Now, there's a couple, there's four yellows right by Tallgrass Park. I don't have any idea why those are R2, 'cause those are single-family homes. Um, but outside of that, this is, this is a single-family area. So I really struggle putting orange there, for lack of, of a longer explanation. Um, you know, there, there was the same discussion a few years back. It was right before my time, but right to the west of where that cursor is, our city leaders decided, this is not the right fit. And we were talking R2. They said, this is not the right thing to do, not the right fit. And it was decided not to go through with R2. And we're not even talking R2, we're talking R3. I do have the similar concerns that were spoken tonight about the drainage. Redwood is a mess. I don't take redwood frequently, but, but I've, I've seen what they're talking about. Um, the parking and the traffic is, is definitely a concern. I also worry about the section of land then to the south and whether that would set precedent for more multifamily homes or housing in a single-family resident area. Um, when our city leaders decided it was not a good fit three or four years ago, I get that that's not permanent, but I, I can't figure out what has changed since then to make it justifiable now. The only thing that has changed is that area now has more single-family homes. To me, this map is really telling. I, I don't think it's the right area. I think we can find better places in our city. Uh, and I, I don't wanna set a precedence for other areas of town either, where people have to worry about picking a place to build or buy, knowing that they're gonna be in a residential area with single-family residents, and it could be changed on them later. I, I do think that we owe it to the neighborhood to keep it as it is with R1.
Thank you, Dana. Any other discussion?
I'd like to ask Ben another question. First of all, what is the assurance that you can give people that this is the design that's gonna be given? I understand we go through another process here under conditional use, but rather than ending up with, okay, I can build on this, it's R3, and I can make one building three stories high, as what kind of assurance can you, can we get that this is the design that would be built?
Well, like I mentioned, I guess the, the seller has to approve the plan for the sale to go through. Um, I don't know what they could do after the fact, if something changed down the road. My wife and I at the neighborhood meeting offered a deed restriction. I think that would be a solution to limit that use of that parcel to townhomes. Um, and then also the conditional use of the city to limit it to the townhome-style building or, or number of units or whatever you wanted to put on there. I guess so those, those three different avenues.
Yeah, thank you. Tammy, have you taken a look at the drainage issues on this particular plot, and do you have any comments?
Yep, we know that Redwood next to Split Rock intersection there is a flash flood area. There are signs up there that state that it's a flash flood area. The reason for that is the culvert under that intersection is undersized. Now, when this-
Where are we talking?
The intersection of Split Rock and Redwood.
Split Rock and Redwood, I'm talking about
Yep.
the, the drainage where with this, it seems like this lot lays a little bit lower than than the surrounding area. I, I would imagine there's probably gonna be some fill, but would, would this drain down to that that little creek area, well, it's not a creek area, it's kind of a drainage area, goes to a culvert underneath Pass Flower?
Yes.
Is that where this water would?
You, you know, until Ben hires an engineer and has it surveyed, it's really hard to tell where that water would go. You know, we do have rules and drainage standards. They can't add more water to that site. So for the most part, they can still continue to drain that water on that natural drainage path that it takes now, but they can't move that water faster. So if it is moving that water faster, then they'll have to do some kind of underground or over-ground detention in to hold that water back. There's different ways that it could go for that area. So until he has an engineer look at it, it's kinda hard to tell. I think it would be very minimal impact to the flash flood area that's on Redwood.
And then have you also looked at this from the aspect of the traffic?
Yep, so Redwood has an average daily traffic in ADT of about 3,000, and Pass Flower is about 500. So if those access roads are on to Pass Flower, yes, it could add some more traffic to that road. I think that road is a 33-foot wide road. Yes, when there's parking on both sides, people tend to slow down. I don't think that changes the function of that road. Um, even when it's a wider road and there's cars parked on both sides, most people stop and wait for that next car if they need another one. So I think it's gonna function just fine with the width of the road that it is currently.
Well, now I forgot what I was gonna ask. Jack, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
Yeah, Ben, could you come up again? So I know you, you said, uh, you, you're applying for R3 as opposed to R2 for the density. Um, and the main concerns that I've been hearing tonight have been the density issues. Are you willing to accept some kind of a compromise? That it could be, uh, it's owned as R2 and still get additional units in, in, into this area? Now, Brian, help me out here. R2 would allow how many units?
It would allow four plexes as a permitted use. Let me check here. Four plexes as permitted use, and then as conditional use, you can go up to eight dwelling units.
Okay. And Ben, tell me why that's, something like that's not acceptable.
I think R2 would work for us. Um, like I said, I didn't mean, uh, maybe I misspoke on the density thing. I think density-wise, this would fit in R2 or R3 in the, in the ordinances for those zoning. It would just come down to the num, the extra work of replating and extra conditional uses. And then, uh, I don't know about the shared driveway. When this is all on one parcel, we have the driveway looping through with access off and with, I don't know if you can have landlocked parcels on that road, if that makes it different.
You have a mutual access easement throughout there, and have a whole builders association. So there are a few extra steps.
So I guess, I think, I think it's doable that way. It just, uh, since we're gonna end up with the same result, I, that's why we pitched R3, proposed R3, and we're hoping we could satisfy the, the concerns of a big apartment building with the deed restrictions or conditional use or another way.
Thank you for standing there, Ben. Um, have you thought of doing a plan development instead of doing R2 or R3?
I hear the city doesn't like those.
Well, now, the houses that are built over by Tallgrass Village, that is a planned development. That's not a city street, that is a private road. The city doesn't have any concern with that. You certainly could do a planned development and still have a singular lot and parcel. The thing with a planned development is then we would have to approve the plans before you started. I don't know if that'd be something you'd be open to or not.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ben.
There, there can be issues with a PD as well. Typically, what happens is after a PD is, is approved, there's a concept plan that's, that's talked about, and everybody agrees that, hey, this is what's gonna be done. Market factors change, and then typically the developer wants to come in and say, hey, I can't do this anymore because the market has changed, and now I need to do something different. It's typically what happened, I shouldn't say typically, some of the concerns with a PD.
Are there any further questions or concerns? Otherwise, I would ask that we call for a vote. We have a motion and a second to deny the request to change from R1 to R3.
From what I've been hearing from, from Ben, from the city and the residents here, I think there's a room, room in the middle here somewhere. And, uh, if we deny this, I would, I would hope and I would ask that Ben, you, and, and maybe some select residents and/or the city get involved together and see if you can come up with some other solution. I think it's, it's a place where additional units could be constructed, don't necessarily, I don't believe this piece of property necessarily still has to be single-family homes. I think you can do something more. But I think the fear amongst everyone is that it's, more is too much. So I think, personally, I think that there's a compromising here somewhere. And, uh, if, if the motion is approved, I would ask that you come back to us with a, with an alternate plan.
Jack?
I ask you to do a roll call, both of you.
Yes, we will, we'll do so. So Christina, please.
Clark?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
Fish?
May.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Call?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
Mayor?
This is tough, because I do believe, you know, additional housing is, is important. I do believe that the folks that have come tonight have come believing that what they bought, and I believe they bought this thinking it was going to be R1. I would, uh, I would vote for the motion, aye, to deny. I would agree with Jack. I wish there would be some, um, opportunity to find out if there's something more that we can do. I mean, obviously, they felt that portion next to it could be developed into, uh, R1. So I, I hope we don't give up on it. But I would ask that, uh, conversation continue and communication continue. It's hard for me to, I, I honestly believe that there's a lot of people that are moving into that area with a thought, this is what it's gonna be, and I feel like that's important to honor that. So, thank you for attending. You can leave if you'd like, or you can stay.
Feel bold about it here, like crazy. Yeah.
Next on the agenda is an appeal of water bill. I don't see Mr. Wingate. Anything we need to do on that, Brian?
You, there's no action necessary at the moment. You know, the only action that would be necessary by the council would be to forgive whatever portion of the water done Mr. Wingate's asking for. I, I emailed him today, just a reminder, the meeting tonight, but I did not hear anything.
I would say with him not here, we should just move on.
It's fine.
Thank you. Old Business, uh, second reading of ordinance 645, amending chapters 15, 14, 6, additional use regulations, fence regulations. A motion and a second to approve the second reading of ordinance 645. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second reading of ordinance 646, amending zoning regulations pertaining to commercial kennels. Motion is second to approve, 646. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second reading of ordinance 649, establishing ward boundaries based on the 2020 census. Have a motion and a second to approve. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second reading of ordinance 650, amending medical cannabis ordinance.
Mayor, I'm gonna recuse myself.
Yes.
And I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion and a second to approve the second reading of ordinance 650. Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Golf Course Retaining Wall Project, Geotech Proposal for Test Boreings. Brian, anything there that?
This is for two test boreings for the access road. That's in between that retaining wall and goes down to our sanitary lift station at the golf course for just under $2,000.
Motion and a second to approve the testing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Question, I'm sorry, Jack.
Yeah, comments there.
So Tammy, this is for the boreings on the road. Okay, wasn't our bank stabilization contractor, wasn't he to, uh, repair this road or allow us allowing him to use it?
No. So this road was in really bad shape before they started using it.
True.
And it is, it's not fair to make a contractor pay for a crappy road. They were forced to use it. They wanted to use, um, wanted to use their equipment over top of Split Rock Creek. And since it's a FEMA project, FEMA did not allow us to do so, because it's a Topeka Shiner stream. So they had to use the access road.
They wanted to come in from below Pioneer Park.
Right. If the road was in good shape and then they wrecked it, then that would be a different story. Then, yes, we would make them pay for it. But because it was already in poor condition, there's no way of making them pay for it.
Okay, um, are they gonna participate in the parking lot?
Again, the parking lot was in poor shape.
Well, it's a lot worse.
No, it was. But we think that there'd be something there, but.
A motion and a second to approve the Geotech Proposal for Test Boreings, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Golf Course Retaining Wall Project Design.
ISG is here.
Good evening. Good evening. All right. So, um, as you can see, you have plans in front of you. Uh, we have plans for the access road, uh, as well as a three-to-one- We have plans for the access road as well as a three-to-one cast-in-place retaining wall. Three-to-one would be the same wall profile, but a segmental wall, and a four-to-one, two-tiered wall. And we have a cost estimate for all of those as well. I can jump in a little bit on the retaining wall. And so there's been discussion regarding the three-to-one, four-to-one slope. There was a desire by the staff to have a four-to-one slope. However, that increases the height of the wall. And so if we had a single wall and a four-to-one slope, grading of that due to the existing conditions of the 18th green made it really not feasible to construct the wall due to the excavation on the backside and the existing patio on the existing clubhouse. So then we shifted to, you know, okay, we could do a tiered, two-tiered wall, but that has a little additional cost, right? There's two walls as opposed to the one. And so really, we recommend the three-to-one slope. It's still maintainable, but it is steep. And so it's not something you would, you would mow very often, a couple of times a year, just to keep, keep things short and you're looking okay. As far as the cast-in-place wall goes versus segmental, as you can see, the cost is slightly higher for a cast-in-place concrete wall. However, just by the construction of those types, right, the concrete is much more rigid by nature. It's more durable and really just a better long-term solution in our opinion. You have a segmental wall right now that is, is not functioning properly or maybe functioned for 20 years here now, but just typically doesn't last as long as the concrete wall. And so that is our recommendation as well as for the cast-in-place concrete. There's some limitations with the segmental wall due to the size and scale of this. You can't, a straight gravity wall does not work, and so we would have to have GeoGrid, GeoFabric behind the wall. And so that requires more excavation and really more chance of disturbing the existing footings below the patio or the existing building. And so that is another reason we recommend the concrete. Our footing would be smaller to clay soil, so we could have a pretty short excavation distance just to pour the wall. It would also reduce the construction time, excavate, pour the wall, backfill. If you have a segmental wall, like I said, there's GeoFabric, so you have to put it back in layers and then put your fabric out. Takes longer to build the wall. There is a pretty condensed construction schedule to get this done as fast as we can in the spring, right? That need the clubhouse functioning and the car path accessible for the golf season. So that's, I guess, that's what I got. So, Brian, if you have anything to add or...
No, just introduce myself. Brian Petzel. I'm a civil engineer with ISG. I don't have really anything to add. I think he kind of summed it up very well unless there's any questions that I can answer for you.
I like the long-term solution factor of this because I think that's the key to me is we've got to make sure whatever we do, and I get it, cost is certainly a part of this, but can't do this every 10, 15 years. Want the clubhouse sliding down the hill and sitting on the 18th green.
I'm not an engineer, but I have a memory of a concrete, poured concrete wall along Big Sioux Rec area. And I'm sure it's probably one that you guys did not design. But as soon as this thing went up, I'd run past it and on a daily basis, I'd see that thing getting out of plump. And so how is this anchored to prevent it from hydrostatic pressure or whatever pushing, pushing that wall? Just educate me.
Sure, sure. So that is a concern. That's something that we've, as you're aware, I think that the geotech has done several borings directly in front of the existing wall and behind the wall. And so with any retaining wall, global stability is a concern. It really is. And so part of the issue with the existing wall is there's six to 10 feet of poor soil fill. And that's what's caused a lot of the issues from my understanding. And so that would have to be removed regardless. But once you get past that top six to 10 feet, there's better soils. And so geotech does not have a concern of global stability of this wall, right? And so it is, there's a, it forms almost like a triangle. It's, say the failure plane, there's a wedge of soil, right, that's supporting, that this wall is supporting, if that makes sense. And so it forms lateral earth pressure against the wall. And so it is, the concrete wall has a footing directly below that, right? And so you end up with a higher force on the opposite side of the wall away from the backfill where you see that. But if that's designed properly, the wall should be rigid and should not move. So, I guess.
I believe, Dave, the wall that you're talking about, Tammy, I could be wrong, but it had no anchors in it. Hold on, let me get, oh, hold on.
Correct. That one did not have any anchors and it didn't have the foundation that it needed. It now currently has lots of anchors.
Yes, it does.
Yeah. That was done, not.
I do that. Real quick.
Any other questions, comments?
So, it was mentioned before about the access road. What... What is going to be done on that access road exactly, Tammy? Replace or repair?
Replaced. It needs to be replaced. It also has some drainage issues that Public Works has been trying to kind of patch in at the bottom. This design and this construction would fix those problems as well.
Okay, was all this in our CIP budget?
I think the total will go over the budget. When we did the CIP, we just threw a number at it of the $850,000. It really wasn't based off of anything. It was just a placeholder number.
No, for both of these?
Right. Oh, $750,000, sorry.
And what is the proposed number now, Tammy?
Yeah, $938,000, a little over $938,000.
So where would the extra $187,000 come from?
The remaining would come out of fund balance. We were going to use the $750,000 out of the general fund fund balance anyway to pay for this. So the remaining would also come out of the fund balance.
All right, so I got to ask, what's the difference about this project than the Aspen Park improvements that were proposed? Which were going to come out of the fund balance as well.
In my opinion, Jack, this is, this is, I mean, it would have been nice to do the Aspen Park. This is something we have to do, and I look at have to and nice to do as two different things.
Well, I'll agree with you, Jim, except for the fact that I think there's more in this project than what was originally proposed. Isn't the retaining wall extended now further to the east than what was the original proposal? Correct, it is. The retaining wall, the cart pass that extends past the east, the existing east retaining wall is failing as well. There's a curve there that was poured that is failing. There's cracks in the cart pass. It would indicate that the soil conditions are sliding as well as the existing wall. So if you look at that cart pass, if we're going to stabilize the whole thing, we need to extend that retaining wall further east than what we originally anticipated.
Wish we would have talked about that when we talked about this project during the CIP. Because I understand what Jack's saying about the Aspen Park project. I was one that voted against it because it wasn't in our CIP. I don't recall talking about this extra area in the CIP. It's, I don't know, it's, it's hard to come right out of the gate before we're even in the new year and we're way over budget on stuff already.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to vote for this, but I said back on the Aspen Park parking improvements that we will have additional projects that come up, and here we are two weeks later. And we're looking at one already. So, just using a carte blanche, saying, no, we're not going to do additional projects, it's not the right idea. But I am disappointed that we don't have, especially on this one here, that we didn't have additional information when we went through the CIP process. But I will be voting for this, but I'm just voicing my concerns.
And I, I hear what you're saying, Jack. I wasn't obviously on, on the council at that time you said that, but my read on this is the problem was more severe than what maybe was even anticipated at that point in time. I think this is a fairly, I mean, this needs to get done, otherwise we're going to have a golf course you can't get to. So what do we need to do here, Brian? Is this something we need to approve the, I mean, we obviously have to approve the golf course retaining wall project design?
Yeah, you need to approve the design so that we can move forward with final plans and specs and get the, get the project bid for construction as soon as weather permits, March 1st.
I would move to approve.
A motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. So basically, we would only be over a little bit what we budgeted with that option three-to-one, the cast-in-place, eight-fourteen. Am I reading that right? But then the access road is an extra... Was that part of the original though, that we had to do the access road? That's what I'm struggling with. I know we had to do the retaining wall and stuff like that, but... The access, yeah, I know that part is new, so that would justify, that's in the eight-fourteen, isn't it? Or is that part of the access road, the 123? In front of the cart, a little to the east.
The 124, the access road, is just the road going down to make the shop and the, and the lift station.
So then the eight-fourteen covers what you said we had to kind of additionally, which I see why we'd have to do that. And so that's why that's a little over the $750 budget. And then why do we have to do the access road? Because I thought we had discussion that that could make do, retaining wall was a must.
The discussion was more about let's do the access road when we do the wall. Just because we'll have a contractor there to do the work. We can decide it and fit it out as one project, which saves us money. But we wanted to do that after the base construction project was complete. Because we knew it was already bad, but then the contractor was going to use it, and we didn't want to give them a grandeur throw. That's why it was clear with this project.
I've been on that access road a number of times over the years, and it has deteriorated to the point where it's almost unusable. And there's hardly anything left of it.
Because we need to be able to access that with our store truck, the big store truck, in case there's an emergency.
Other discussion? Do we have a motion and a second to approve the project as designed? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Parks and Rec work report is there in front of you. We have pool improvement pay application. Anything there, Tammy?
This finishes out their contract. They have completed the work. They have a few small cleanup items left to do, so we are holding back the retainage, which is about $70,000 yet. So as they complete that, we'll have some more pay applications, but overall, they are done with the work.
A motion and a second to approve the initial pay application number 11. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Aspen Park project pay application number two.
Same thing as the pool improvements project. They are completed with the work. The utilities are in, the road's in, it's all shaped. Looks pretty good. They have some small cleanup items to do yet, so we're still holding back some of that retainage. But overall, the contract is complete.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the pay application number two. Any questions, concerns?
I have one question on that. I've, I've been on that road a couple of times now and just taken a look at it. Is there going to be curb and gutter in there anticipated at some point or...
Someday, yeah. When we redo that whole road and pavement.
I mean, it, it really looks good down there. It really opens up that land. If anybody hasn't gone down there to take a look at it, it's, it's definitely worth a trip.
Okay, thank you, Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public safety, we have your police report. If there's anything more there, Jamie, that you need to enlighten us with? Thank you. Inspections report, what's that, Brian?
That's the activity in the building inspections department. It notes 83 new permits for single-family homes for the year, one twin, one new twin home, and then it lists out the commercial permits that are open.
Okay. Ambulance report, building permit valuations. One, Ken?
We took a look at the process for determining a permit value, a building permit value or a cost for a building permit. Contractor will bring in a set of plans. Staff will look at the square footage, both finished and unfinished, whether it's a garage, unfinished basement, et cetera. And then we use a cost per square foot to determine a total estimated cost for that project. And then that is put into a formula that we have to determine the permit cost. We haven't updated those square foot costs since 2003. So it's, it's been a while. We took a look at that. The ICC puts out a report twice a year with national averages for per-square-foot cost. So if you look on, on page 111, you know, a wood frame building at this point in time, up to 1,200 square feet, we charge $68 a square foot. We're recommending moving that to 123, and that's with a 10% reduction in the ICC national average. So it will increase building permit costs. Like I said, we haven't reviewed these since '03.
So Brian, there's a lot of shingling going on. Is that not considered in this?
It is.
Did I miss it?
We have a, yeah, we have a, just a set cost for a number of permits such as shingling.
Where is it?
Page 112, there's flat fee projects. Reshingling is one of those. We're going to move from $20 to $30.
Okay.
So re-siding, reshingling, window replacement, egress windows, signs raising, all that stuff, those are, that's just a set fee.
So all of those roofs that are being reshingled, they're supposed to be coming in?
And they are.
Okay. Make sure mine did.
Thank you.
Well, again, when you wait too long, it seems like a big jump, but I think it's time to...
So no, no action at this point in time. If the councils agree, well, we will draft a resolution for consideration at the next, next council meeting. And then the new, new rates will go into effect January 1st.
So do we need a motion to do anything or just...
Nope, just, no. I don't hear too much opposition, so we'll, we'll draft that.
Head nods, Cal?
Okay.
Okay. Administration, engineering technician draft, job description. I have a motion and a second to approve the job description that's listed there. Any questions on that?
Any of you have any more thoughts on this? And Brian, do you, I guess? No, not on, on the job description. I think it's a pretty good job description as always. You know, there's the catch-all and other duties is maybe assigned from time to time. As far as the timing goes, we'll sit down with Julie, probably this week, put together an advertising schedule where we're going to advertise. Typically, we'd advertise in the local paper and then on the South Dakota Municipal League website, probably Minnesota and Iowa as well. Hopefully, well, at the holidays, the internet always messes things up. You know, probably advertise for three weeks and then review applications, interview... end of December-ish with hopefully a recommendation. First meeting in January might be pushing it, but hopefully certainly by the second.
So what types of candidate are we actually looking for? Someone right out of school or with a couple of years of experience?
As good a candidate as we can get? No, it would be, yeah, we don't necessarily have any requirements in here for X number of years' work experience. Right now, it's a two-year degree in those listed, GIS, JRF, construction, et cetera. It's a new position, so it's going to be one of those that we'll kind of see what we get. As always, if we don't get a pool of candidates that we're comfortable with, you know, we would re-advertise and restart the search. Maybe refine it, maybe a little more as to what we're looking at. But this is a pretty broad spectrum to hopefully attract the most candidates.
If we receive no candidates, first of all, Tammy, what's your thoughts? Think we would receive candidate applicants?
I'm not really sure. There's a lot of engineering jobs, positions open right now. Watertown's hiring, City of Sioux Falls has twelve, I think, open. Harrisburg has theirs open, Brookings has theirs open. So we're not overly competitive. So that's why I went to the two-year. You know, a kid out of like Southeast Tech who can do basic AutoCAD, who can survey, who has a little bit of construction inspection would be a really good candidate.
I guess I'm not familiar with that first school up there.
I went to Southeast Tech first before I went to SDSU. I learned a lot at Southeast Tech. They have a really good surveying program and a really good AutoCAD and GIS program. I did a lot of construction inspection and concrete testing, and it was very hands-on.
So we just need to hire somebody like you for a couple of years?
Yeah, that'd be great.
I have a motion and a second to approve the draft. Yeah, correct.
Yeah, I had another question, but it wasn't on this specifically. It was just a general question. So we've got, are we trying to hire six, seven physicians? How many physicians are we trying to hire?
We're trying to hire one development director, which is kind of on pause because human resources is a little swamped right at the moment. We're looking at this, and then we're looking at hiring two full-time public works positions and then one temporary public works position to fill in while Matt's deployed. So I think right now, we just got two more public works apps in today. About a dozen, I think, public works.
What are we looking at? Finalizing those candidates?
We're going through the process. Oh, and I forgot, finance, assistant finance officer, too. We're doing, typically what we do is we do a phone screen on those applicants that interest us. And then once we review those phone screens, we'll invite them in for an in-person interview. We did make an offer for public works, which unfortunately, the candidate, we didn't pique his interest. So I think we've got, how many other phone screens have we done? I think Julie's done another three or four phone screens at public works, another, like I said, two applications in today. One is very interesting, very well-qualified applicant, so we'll certainly do a phone screen with that person and then start lining up interviews when we get them in.
When you say that the one guy didn't, his interest wasn't piqued?
Nope. Wages and benefits were not, were lower than his current position.
And where is he?
Northwest Iowa, I can't remember. I think he lives in Larchwood, works in one of the rocks, Rock Valley, Rock Rapids.
Okay. All in favor of approval of the technician draft job description, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Streets. We have a work report on page one seventeen. We have the 2021 Slurry Field Project Pay Application Number One. And finally? A motion and a second to approve the bills. Any questions on those? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Transit system grant agreement with...
Resolution assessing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Proposed resolution of necessity for ironwood improvement project. Page one twenty-one. A motion and a second to approve the necessity for ironwood improvement project?
This is just step one.
Correct.
This is step one in the process. It says that we would like to do the project and utilize special assessments to help defray the cost of it. And then, if you remember, the very lengthy ordinance, special assessment process outlines it, and then Christina's put together a timeline that shows the process and the number of steps that we have to do yet. We're also looking at notifying the property owners and having a property owner meeting next...
Thirtieth?
Yeah, that week, the week of the thirtieth.
Yes.
Brian, Brian and I, Brian gave me a tour of the area today, which was very informative for me and interesting.
So again, this process, so does it mean, I know this ordinance says we could charge a hundred percent, but doesn't mean we have to.
No, correct. I think there's a cost estimate in there, the total project...
Page one twenty-five.
Thank you.
There's a total project cost of one point, a little over one point eight million, and then there's a column that says accessible, a little over a million. And then the non-accessible, which the city would cover eight hundred and five thousand.
Okay, we have a, any other questions? I'm sorry. Do you have a motion and second to the resolution of necessity for ironwood improvement project? Other questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Well, you've got four months here to go of this process, so...
On page one twenty-seven is the timeline. Since it was approved tonight, number one would be the timeline that we'll work through. Letters will go out yet this week to the landowners, notifying them. And then we'll have a landowner meeting on Tuesday, the November thirtieth, before the public hearing in front of the council on December 6th.
When will we be, I'm trying to look through your timeline, when will we be looking at which assessment will we use there?
This resolution really sets like the method as well. Majority of it is the area method. On the maps, on one twenty-six, we'll show the area of the special assessment and the landowners that this project affects.
Good, okay. Transit system grant agreement with South Dakota Department of Transportation.
DOT notified us that we will receive sixty-six thousand, six sixty-one, eighty-one, and fifty-three, eleven grant funds for the bus system.
A motion and a second to approve the DOT grant agreement. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Core Phase Two purchase agreement for Narum property.
So there's two properties that we need to purchase for this project for kind of detention ponds. This is one of them. The other one is the Brandon Elementary School site. And then we'll also need a permanent drainage easement as well. So this is the first step with Larry Narum. It's a one point two, three acre parcel. We offered him twenty-five thousand an acre, so it is thirty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I have a motion and a second to approve the purchase agreement for the Narum property. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Rushmore Area Project Pay Application Number Seven.
The asphalt's down, concrete's done. They're doing a lot of the landscaping and really cleaning it up, so they're taking full advantage of the nice weather yet.
A motion and a second to approve the Rushmore Area Project Pay Application Number Seven. Further questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. McCarty Bridge Repair Project, proposed contract.
This is a big grant. It's a bridge improvement grant. McCarty Bridge is in really good shape, but the deck is not. There's a lot of concrete delamination. And so the state has a program where they'll pay for eighty percent of the construction costs and some of the engineering costs for it. They did award us the funds. And so this is a proposal with IMAG to do the design and to bid out the project.
I have a motion and a second to approve the bridge IMAG proposed contract. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Water and sewer, we have a wage adjustment for Dale Kerber.
Dale's in public works, but he is also our plumbing inspector for the inspections department.
A motion and a second to approve the wage adjustment. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Proposed twenty-two water rates?
It's that time of year to talk about utility rates. The water rates, I'm recommending a three percent increase for next year on base and volumetric. The average resident, six thousand gallons, would see about a dollar, twelve dollar increase in their utility bill. This is just to keep up with O and M, the projects, the debt that we are seeing in the water fund. There's nothing you need to do tonight unless anybody's opposed to that or has questions on that.
Tammy, what did we, Tammy, I'm sorry. Christina, what did we do last year? Remember?
I think it was three. I think it was three.
Yeah, and if you remember, part of the rate study that AETU has performed for us, they created a spreadsheet that we can use, and that's showing on page one eighty-four for the water rates, where Christina can get in and plug in different scenarios, the rate increases or rate changes, and it'll compute based on some assumptions on expenditures of projects that we already have on the books, what that fund balance will be at the end of the year. So looking at that three percent, you know, our fund balance is still fairly healthy. We started drawing that down a little bit.
We did actually not increase the base last year, so the base was zero. And actually, each volumetric tier was kind of different. Our kind of main percentage increase we did was five percent, but the max we did was ten.
Because we implemented the tiered, the tiered system. So it was new.
So do we need to...
Nothing tonight. This is just for information, unless there's terrible opposition, once again, we'll draft a resolution for consideration in December.
Water was three, sewer, did you...
Sewer percent, sewer, I'm recommending a five percent increase. We do have some major projects coming up in the sewer fund that we do need to go that stay at five percent. Four years ago, we actually had a, actually, it's five years ago now, four years ago. We'd actually had a resolution that did fifteen percent for four years, so 2022 was that last year, and they recommended fifteen percent. Last year, we went to five percent, and I'm recommending that five percent this year. So it is still better than the fifteen percent recommended a while ago, but we do need to keep up with all of the projects we have in the sewer fund.
Street lighting rates?
And just one thing, just related to sewers, the SDC charge. Twenty twenty-one is the last year that the city would participate in sharing that cost with developers and contractors. So 2022, that would be split fifty-fifty between the developer and the contractor. When the lot is platted, the developer will pay eleven ninety-five, and then when a permit is pulled, the contractor will pay eleven ninety-five. So just another little tidbit to the sewer.
Okay. Street lighting, recommending three percent. So it'll go from six dollars to six dollars and eighteen cents.
Any other questions anyone has on those?
I think these are just very reasonable.
For the next meeting.
Okay. So just out of curiosity, we talked about doing the building permit valuation that hadn't been changed since 2003. Was there a period of time in the water and sewer and street lighting where we had gone multiple years without really addressing those sorts of increases?
Oh, sewer and water. And you know, until we started doing our, working on our list of backed-up projects, sewer and water rates were fairly stagnant. The street lighting fees are fairly new. But even then, we haven't changed those.
We changed them in twenty, last year, but before that, we hadn't changed them since 2016.
And that's, we've changed them now because we're starting to do these projects and we're putting in new streetlights. So our fees with Suvali have increased.
Well, I'm a firm believer that gradual is better than sharp.
Yes.
The water meter replacement project bids.
We're replacing about seven hundred water meters. The city does pay or buy the water meters, and that was about a hundred and sixty-five thousand. We bid out the labor for putting in those water meters, and that was at sixty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents from Ferguson Water Works. They're the ones that have done it the past couple of years, and they do a really good job with scheduling and working with the homeowners to get in there and replace those meters.
A motion and a second to approve the water meter replacement bid. Any other questions, comments?
I'm just saying, it's the core area this year, so the whole core area plus a little bit over on the west side of Sioux, and we plan to start that after the first of the year, hopefully by mid-February, so...
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Bethany Drainage Maintenance Quote from Sukup.
This detention BMP, it's a regional BMP and has had very little maintenance since it was built. There are three sediment ponds in there that are connected before it actually goes to the Little Creek and then goes underneath Aspen Boulevard, and there's pipes connecting those ponds. Those ponds are full of sediment, and those pipes are full. And so this is a contract with Sukup to kind of do an hourly basis work. Kind of the plan is that they would go in there, start on the downstream side, and see if we can't get it to drain. Once we get it drained, then they can come back and they can remove some of that sediment. We're not doing a full survey and design and bidding out this work. We only have fifty thousand in the budget, and so I'll be out there watching and documenting how much time they use out there and how much sediment they're actually removing, and we'll just do as much as we can for that fifty thousand.
So how do you stop this from reoccurring and sediment to continuously be an issue?
So the biggest part is when home builders are building in that area, you know, they're really messy. They're driving their equipment over the curb, they're piling their materials in the road. When it rains, it all goes down the curve and it goes into those inlets. We've had inlet protection along Sunshine there, and a lot of people complain about it because it does hold back that water because it's trying to filter all the sediment out of it. And then it doesn't get cleaned like it should. It's a constant battle here in town. We don't really have somebody to just drive around and look at erosion control measures. I really hope that's part of the engineering technician's job, too, so we can stay on top of that a little bit better. But a lot of it is keeping the street clean. That's what we...
That's what we need to do. We need to make sure we get after contractors and home builders and make sure we're doing our street sweeping. So it's more preventative maintenance. Now that all the homes are built out there, there's not very many empty lots. I think now is the time to start doing the maintenance and get it back up to where it's functioning. And after the next couple of years of maintenance, we should be able to get it so that it doesn't need such drastic maintenance.
So Tammy, you're thinking this is going to be annual thing here for a couple, three years?
I think so. I think it's going to take us quite a while to get it back to where it needs to be.
This is what Raleigh was talking to us about, right, during budget. I think he was saying that, though doesn't some of his guys do some of it, but it's just too much.
Yeah, yep.
We don't have the equipment to do it. If you look at, you know, the bid sheet. You know, they've got a, where did I see it? A long reach excavator.
Yeah, we don't have that.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have that.
Snake?
Don't, don't even hint that we need one. Because we'll buy it.
I have a motion to approve this.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the maintenance quote from Sukup. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Water Tower Project Pay Application Number Six.
A lot of the concrete work for the water tower is completed, the bases. It very much looks like construction has stopped out there because they're not working on-site, but they're putting together the bowl of the water tower. It's metal, so they're welding it off-site. They'll load it up on trucks probably the beginning of December. Then they'll deliver it to site, then they'll weld it all together, and then they'll lift it all as one piece. So it won't look like there's anything going out there for a while, but in the beginning of December, there'll be quite a few more semis going out there.
She has a picture.
Yeah.
I was wondering, because I hadn't seen anyone there when I'm out for a walk.
Yeah, they're just not on-site.
Yeah.
I don't go all the way up there, but.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second for the pay application. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business?
I have a quick question. I'm like, hey, I want to, because I forgot last time. Okay, you know, I think it's Maple? Is that the one that goes by the intermediate school, Robert Bennett, right, off of Sioux? So I noticed one way I was taking, I was getting my kid from an intermediate school, there's no like school sign saying slow down, but when you come back, there is. Because, or it's vice versa, one of the two, but I'm like, why is it one way and not the other way?
A lot of those school zone signs are placed incorrectly, and they need to be replaced. I'm working with Public Works on redoing that area.
Okay. I just noticed, and I thought, well, that's kind of weird how it's telling you to slow down one way and not the other. Okay, that was just I.
Do we need executive session, Brian?
Yes, we do, for potential litigation.
Okay. Thank you for coming. I declare executive session.
Need a motion?
Make motion, to move.
A motion and a second to approve going into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Let's make it quick.